Welcome to the Bellingham City Council Candidate Forum, co-hosted by the Watcomb County League of Women's Voters and the Bellingham High School Civics and AP Government Classes. Before we begin tonight, I would like to read our land acknowledgement. The land we stand on is the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Lummi and Nuxak people, the original inhabitants of Washington's northernmost coast and southern British Columbia. Since time immemorial, they've celebrated and cared for their land and waters to perpetuate their way of life. Please join me in deep gratitude for their ongoing wisdom and guidance as we take a moment to honor their ancestors and acknowledge the past, present, and future Lummi and Nuxak people as the original inhabitants of this land. My name is Angel. I am a senior at Bellingham High School, and I think it's important to engage civically and be involved in our community because while I believe everyone can have the right to choose what they want to say and do, people need to stand together to make a choice that benefits everyone. As my school's collective commitments have taught me, being involved can produce quality work, help treat people with dignity and respect, and take care of this great community. I believe these goals are all important because when people stand for what's right and what they believe in, it brings everyone together to create a strong community. A couple of reminders during tonight's forum. Please turn off your cell phones. The League of Women's Voters is a nonpartisan organization which encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government. No video recording by the audience is permitted, but tonight's forum is being videotaped. Links will be available through the League of Women's Voters website. Please join me in welcoming Annette Holcombe as the League's moderator for this evening.
It's great to see you here tonight. As Angel said, my name is Annette Holcombe, and I would like to share a little about the League of Women Voters and explain the procedures that we'll be following tonight. Founded in 1920, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses a party or a candidate. Membership is open to both men and women 16 years of age or older, so we invite you to join us. Membership information is available on our website. And it is our great pleasure to be partnering with Jennifer Rydel and her Bellingham High School Civics class students tonight. Starting last month, the students defined their areas of interest and crafted good questions for the candidates. And tonight, they are filling mini-rolls to make this happen. Tonight's forum is for the Bellingham City Council candidates. There are four council seats on the November ballot. The at-large candidate, Jace Cotton, does not have an opponent, but we are here to welcome the candidates who are competing for the three contested races on the council. And I'd like to introduce them. From your left to the right, first we have Holly Huckman, then Leah Wainman, who are running for Ward Two council seat. Next, we have Carrie Burnside and Skip Williams, candidates for Ward Four council. And then Michael Liliquis and Andrew Redding, candidates for Ward Six. The city council is Bellingham's legislative body. They are responsible for setting public policies, planning long-range ideas, and approving the budget and the taxes, and passing laws for the city. Voters who live in Bellingham elect the city council members. They serve for four-year terms, except that the at-large candidate has a two-year term. In the November general election, all Bellingham voters have an opportunity to vote for a single candidate in each ward. The Bellingham City Council meets on the second and fourth Mondays of the month in the city council chambers at 7:00 PM. So we'll follow some specific rules tonight for the forum. There will be no opening statement. Instead, our first question is tailored to elicit some responses that candidates would normally share in an opening. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question and will make a one-minute closing statement. Each candidate will be asked to respond to the same question. The order of the questions and the closing statements will be seat by seat and alphabetically, and we will switch so that they have alternate terms of who speaks first. Attendees, you may write a question on one of the three-by-five cards that our ushers have passed out at the door. However, we will review the questions to see if there is duplication or if that topic has already been covered. And please note that your questions must be ones that are appropriate for all six candidates rather than directed to a specific person. Each candidate has a challenge card, a yellow card here, and candidates may use this card to challenge or rebut their opponent's response to a question. After being recognized by me, the moderator, the challenging candidate will then have 30 seconds to state their challenge, and the opponent will have 30 seconds to respond. You can only use your challenge card one time during the evening. Timers are here. Michelle Kopsha and Carol Como, they will be tracking the time. They will indicate when there are 15 seconds left. When time is up, they'll show you a stop sign and ring a bell if necessary. We ask that the candidates all be respectful of the time allotted so that we can deal with as many questions as possible. So those are all the rules. With that covered, let's begin. Candidates, remember you have one minute and 30 seconds to respond. Our first question is, what is one issue or policy where you differ from your opponent? And candidate Huckman, would you please respond first?
I unfortunately don't know that we have a policy or issue that is terribly different. So this is a tough question. So I am scratching my memory of getting to know Leah over the last couple months to see what I can come up with. It would be a small detail. You know, we have a lot of the same values and vision. All of us here on this panel tonight, we're all registered Democrats. So that is one thing about the city of Bellingham races is that we don't tend to get many Republican challengers. I don't know if anybody here can remember a Republican challenger to a council seat. Maybe Michael can. Eric Bostrum, that's right. So I think, you know, when it comes to differences, those are generally experience and background. And I've been on council for almost six years. My background is I'm a business owner, I'm a parent, but that's the same. Was that the bell? No, okay, I'm sorry. 15 seconds. Oh, thank you, there you are. And I have a degree in sociology. And so those are things that really influenced my decision-making on council. Oh, thank you. That was a tough one. That was a tough one. Okay. I'm so...
Leah Wainman, your response. Yes, can you repeat the question for me?
What is one issue or policy where you differ from your opponent?
So in this instance, I am very thankful that my last name starts with a W, because I'm always at the end. And so this is a tough one, I would say. We are all registered Democrats. We all hold the same values, and I think that's what allows us to move forward with such decorum compared to national politics, is that locally, we all want to see our community thrive, and we all want to see everyone do well, and we want to see prosperity and health and happiness for everyone in this community. I think the question is, how do we do that? And I would say that I'm glad that you mentioned like your business and that, your education and training. And I would say my education and training really, for me, distinguishes myself from my opponent. And not the specific policy, but how do we enact policy and how do we write policy? I'm trained in public health practice and epidemiology. And so my training is to look at the entire community and to understand policymaking impacts not only one specific sector or one specific part of our community, but our community is a component of systems that all work together, like our healthcare system, like our education system, like our economic systems. They all work together. And so how I differ is that I bring that lens, and that this housing crisis is not just about housing supply, it is about how the systems lead to the housing crisis, how the broken systems around us have led to this housing crisis. And I think that's the difference.
Thank you. Candidate Burnside.
How we differ, I will say, ditto. As Democrats here, we have a lot of the same values and ideals. Skip is a wonderful musician. I am not. So that is one difference. I'm a policy person. I have a background in process improvement and change management. I am a proactive, I've effectively, I have been able to influence policy here in Bellingham with Initiative Two, the Rent-to-Relocation Assistance. Also, I have effectively helped influence policy at the state level in Olympia with a host of housing bills and renter protections. I'm a data-driven, very proactive person. I would say those are some of the differences. What we do have in common is community building, but I tend to, if something isn't happening and community isn't coming together naturally and on its own, I'll go out into community and help foster that and build it. I also grew up here in Bellingham, and while I didn't graduate from Bellingham High School, I did graduate from Seehom, but I'm wearing red, not for Republicans, but in solidarity with Bellingham High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think what you've heard from all of us isn't the what, but the how. How do we get to those answers and how do we get to developing policy and solving problems here for us? And my background is not only in music, but in public education as a public school teacher, as a union representative for the Washington Education Association, where I've had to go through mediations and problem-solving and negotiations for 22 school districts here, going from Blaine to the southern end of Whidbey Island. What that has shown me, process-wise, is that I know how to bring people together, work on a problem, identify the problem, work on it, and hopeful, and I never go into that with one solution to that problem. I'm always open to be persuaded, and as I've learned through my experiences, you can always get your way if you have more than one way. So I think that's a big difference, is having one solution as opposed to options.
Let me see if this is... Oh, good. Yeah, I'm going to say something similar. We are all progressives, and in terms of values and outcomes, I think we're similar. And as Skip said, I think it comes down to disagreements on the means and the methods and the prioritizations or the mechanisms. For example, I'm very strongly leading into a full range of housing solutions, and I do believe in housing reforms to zoning reforms to allow for more housing. But Mr. Redding emphasizes that more than I do. I think that the private sector produces what's profitable and what can be financed, and we know from experience in other communities that it doesn't produce affordable housing, and that's the solution we have, that's the problem we need to solve. State law has told us we need to provide for housing at all levels of income, and a market solution won't do it. But again, it's a matter of degree and emphasis. I don't think Mr. Redding misunderstands or ignores that. So it's a matter of degree. Mr. Redding has also criticized the idea of complexity. He says that that's often just a way of getting in the way of the discussion, that there are simpler and purer answers. I disagree. I believe we have to lean into complexity when it comes to, for example, criminal justice reform, where the majority of the people who are in jail are addicted or have substance abuse disorders. So there's complexity in crime fighting. So I lean into complexity. Again, it's just a more matter of degree and emphasis rather than a matter of desired outcome. So that's probably the best I can do in terms of saying how we disagree with each other or might differ.
So we were asked to answer about an issue that we differ on most, and that would be housing, and we could not be more different on that. Maybe in words, it sounds similar, but in actions, we could not be more separated. I am calling this a referendum on housing policy because we are now the most unaffordable small city in America under 150,000, and the fourth most unaffordable city of any size. Okay? And we didn't get there by accident, folks. We have 434 zones and subzones here. Why? Because a former council, not the present one, so I'm not critiquing all the present council members with a few exceptions, a couple of exceptions. A former council handed over much of the zoning stuff over to, of all things, neighborhood associations, which are unelected. They are wonderful things to have. They're great to do block parties and that kind of stuff, but they should not be weighing in on zoning. They're not elected. And when you do that, what do you get? It's no surprise that we've gotten a "not in my neighborhood" kind of zoning writ large, and one of the worst in the country. And so of course, what we've got to do at this point is we've got to sweep that away. And I'm proposing to do that with what's called the smart code, which would allow us to do more density. And density means yes. You cannot bring down the cost of land. The only way to bring down the price of housing is to have more units per land, and our code does not allow that presently, so I'm saying we need to do that. There's a lot more, too. You'll have to look on my website. You can't do this in 90 seconds. It's too complex.
We are getting the other mic fixed, but remember to hold it close to you. So I'd like to introduce Caleb Brown.
Can we wait just for him on it?
Oh.
We're trying to fix things.
Okay.
I just want to hold on for a minute.
All right.
Saul, would you come down and verify this? Hold on. You've got to mute on.
My name is Caleb Brown, and I'm a senior here at Bellingham High School. I believe being civically engaged in the community is important because when is the last time anything has ever changed, when we sat and did nothing? Because we have been given the gift of democracy, and such, it is our duty and responsibility to carry out and make the changes that we want to see in the community, in the country, and the world. Well-behaved people hardly make history. My question for the candidates, how might you expand or extend resources for mental health to people experiencing homelessness?
Thank you so much for that question. It's very important and near and dear to my heart and to my training. In public health practice, we include the world of behavioral health as a part of the healthcare system. And so from my perspective, I think first and foremost, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to our tribal partners, our tribal partners in the region and the community, like Suenamish, who came to our aid and provided us with substance use services in our community that we did not have the capacity for. I also think that we need to look to the Lummi tribe for their ability to provide these services to their community in a way that is culturally responsive and more community-based and community-driven. I think there's lots of opportunity to look at how do we expand capacity for local inpatient care? What happens is that folks want treatment and want services, and so they go into detox or they're arrested and they detox in jail, but they don't have a place to go to after that because we don't have in-bed. So how can we support more in-bed treatment facilities here locally? And one thing that was brought up at the last forum that I think I really support is helping people do treatment at home, especially for folks who don't want to go to facilities, who want that sort of community-based care in that community and their family to support them, which is very much so needed in behavioral health world. How can we support doing that locally? And then also, I've spoken to a lot of behavioral health providers who find it very challenging to navigate our health insurance system, and really are wanting to come together and form a cooperative of behavioral health providers because it's hard to be a solo in that world. And how can we in the city support creating cooperatives for behavioral health providers? I'm so sorry.
All right, thanks for that question. It's a great one, and one I'm passionate about as well. You know, in Bellingham, I think we've been really fortunate that we are a community that's willing to take some chances and start some new things before they've even necessarily been really well-tested in other communities. And so one of the things that I was supportive of, and I got to vote on this early on as a city council member, is the Alternative Response Team. And we modeled that after a fairly innovative program in Eugene called Kahoots. And so the Alternative Response Team is an unarmed, non-uniformed first responder. They go in teams. They are sent from dispatch. So if somebody calls 911, this team is sent rather than police. And so this team can spend time with the person and get a better opportunity to actually address that person's needs in the moment, where a police officer is really going to one crisis, putting out the metaphorical fire, and moving on as quickly as possible so that they can answer as many calls as possible. So I think that has been incredibly, I didn't want to spend time on just one program, but I like this program so much, and I want to expand it. We now have the justice tax revenue coming in that we can potentially use to expand that.
Could you please?
Of course. How might you expand or extend resources for mental health to people experiencing homelessness?
Okay. So what we have heard about are a lot of the alternative response mechanisms that we have when things kind of go off of the deep end for some of our citizens. But one of the things that I learned when I first came on the council is the mechanisms that we have available to deal with low-income, affordable housing, and the partnerships that we have with other organizations as well as the county. We have, due to the vote of our city, a fund that helps to subsidize building of low-income housing. We have partners like the Colson Land Trust that develops housing units for affordable housing. Does it move fast enough and is it large enough? No. But it is a piece of the solution that is happening. And things like that are things that need to grow, and we need to continue developing partnerships that allow that to happen.
So the question was asking how we can expand mental health services to those experiencing homelessness, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So this is a topic that I'm going to do the best I can to get through. My brother had schizophrenia, so it's still very painful to talk about, and is a big driving force for why I am seeking a seat on city council, because not enough is being done. And it's a problem, I don't even like to say problem, because it's not something that people choose, and it impacts a lot of people. Mental health illness does impact a lot of people in our community. My brother's choice, or how he solved, really struggling with his lack of stable housing, was to unalive himself. Really hard to talk about, but really important. So yes, the services that have been mentioned are huge improvements from when my family was really struggling to help my brother. They didn't exist back then, but I can say that the police at that time were really beneficial. So one of the things, I have to speed up. One of the things that I would do to expand that is educate the community. I spend a lot of time helping my neighbors be aware of the crisis response team. So when we see a neighbor struggling, we don't judge, we get them help. I'm at time. Thank you.
First of all, I want to say I have a lot of respect for council member Dan Hamel, who is really specialized in this very topic, and I think he's doing a great job with us. But I want to emphasize that we're treating here the symptoms rather than the causes. Again, we've created a situation here with such a shortage of housing that it has forced more than 1,700 people into the streets. And I want to emphasize that that does not happen, as many people think it happens, because of people being mentally ill or people being addicted or whatever. A really good way to illustrate that is Detroit. Detroit has much higher rates of mental illness, much higher rates of poverty, much higher rates of drug addiction than we do by far, and yet they don't have a homelessness problem. Why is that? They have an excess of supply over demand in housing. And that means that people with addictions, with mental illnesses and so forth, are housed, and that is the most critical thing there. Precisely because they're not housed here is why we have to rely on very expensive emergency services that are going to bankrupt the city if we keep this conveyor belt pushing more and more homeless people into the streets. That's why I'm saying we've got to go to the source of this. We've got to get rid of the zoning that has created this mess if we're to truly fix this problem.
So I mean, to start off with, I volunteer weekly, providing food and comfort to people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. And a great many of them are indeed pushed into homelessness by a lack of interim housing. But there's also genuine mental illness out there, which is why I'm a strong believer in what's called the Housing First model, which is that rather than requiring someone to straighten up or get back on their meds, you get them into interim housing first as the most important way to stabilize their life, and then deal with issues they might have with mental illness or their medications or drug addiction. So start with that. I voted to create the Homeless Outreach Team, which is a means that we go out to the community, not deal just with homelessness, but to provide services and connect them. The Alternative Response Team that Holly recommended, I also strongly advocated for and support that. Again, these are people in crisis who don't need a law enforcement response, they need trained behavioral health professionals. I think one of the biggest things we can look forward to in terms of increasing funding for mental illness for the community as well as for people who are homeless is the county's Justice Project. That justice project is slated to spend over the lifetime of that new tax levy, half of all the money on behavioral health. And right now, the county's... And right now, the county is in a planning stage for a new behavioral health care center near the county's Triesas Tria Center. And as a member of the county's Facilities and Finance Advisory Board, I want to make sure that the behavioral health center is built.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have the next question for you. The new comprehensive plan...
Oh, yes. I'm shorter. Thank you. The new comprehensive plan will look 20 years ahead. What's your vision for Bellingham in 2045? What will be our biggest win and our biggest challenge if we get it right? And candidate Huffman, I'd like your response first, please.
There we go. Thank you. 2045, oh, it's fun to dream. So 2045, I believe, you know, with the input of our community, which has given us a lot of input to help inform the comprehensive plan, I think that what we will see is more opportunity for different housing types in all neighborhoods. And so you have choice, choice in what neighborhood you live in, choice what type of housing that you live in, and all within your, hopefully, your budget. I envision that what we will have is the opportunity to walk five minutes to go to a coffee shop for everyone in Bellingham. And I think that's just, that's one way of saying, being able to access your basic necessities by walking to them, having small commercial spaces in neighborhoods. I think everybody should, as a matter of equity, be able to walk to the things that they need to get, most importantly, possibly food. Gosh, 90 minutes is not very much. I also envision that we are going to have more opportunities for indoor recreation. I think that we are severely lacking in indoor recreation opportunities, particularly aquatics. I hope we get there by 2045.
Okay. So the question was...
Looking 20 years ahead, what is your vision for Bellingham in 2045? What will be our biggest win and our biggest challenge if we get it right?
Okay. Our, let's see, our biggest challenge is that we will be the envy of all cities in Washington and across this country. I would say my vision for Bellingham by 2045 is that we have a vibrant and thriving downtown that is the center of this city. Then we also have urban villages across the city that also rival downtown and that have community gathering centers around housing where folks can walk and bike to safely and that we have schools and daycares there as well. And that we have built for where folks want to live and what they want to live in and what they can afford, which means that we have invested heavily in workforce housing and that we have invested in a way that allows people to work for a living but not spend all day working, to be able to pay for housing that they not only rent but that they own. And so we have created opportunities for wealth that will go across generations and that we have planned for not just ourselves, but our children and our children's children to live in the beautiful natural environment that is Bellingham and that we have everything that we have today and that we safeguarded that, including the forest and the trees and drinking water, that we continue to have drinking water available for our children and our children's children. And so we have built for that as well. Thank you. Thank you.
This one works. I'll take this one. For the comp plan, if we get it right, we can count on increased housing types, commonly referred to as middle housing. Additionally, if we get it right, based on what's in this comp plan right now, we will still have a serious affordability crisis. When you look closely at the comp plan, for the people making 50% AMI, area median income, which currently is $53,000 a year, for that income in less, we need 4,117 homes. The comp plan has an ability to bring on 850. We need 4,117 alone in just the 30% to 50% AMI, and their best-case scenario is 850. So even if we get it right, we will still have the housing crisis, probably worse than we have right now. If we don't get our comp plan right, we are going to have an even more compromised drinking This is a topic that doesn't get talked about enough and we've become complacent on. So getting it right, we will have more housing options. Getting it right, we will also have an affordability crisis. Thank you.
From my point of view, is this on? Okay. From my point of view, given all of the things that have been said, which I generally see as problems that need to be solved, but one big problem that I see in my experience here is having a more of a forward-looking systemic approach to our urban growth needs. And when I say that, I mean, we have to be forward-looking and not backwards-looking. And we have to do it in a way that is done so that as our population grows, we bring in what we need. We bring in what we need in a way that works. Now, I don't mean bringing in a parcel of property and then the next parcel is not brought in. I mean, base it on future, base it on population, and base it on a systemic approach.
Okay. Thank you. But your opponent has a challenge. So candidate Burnside?
30 seconds?
30 seconds.
So the comp plan is a forward-thinking plan, 20 years. So this plans out for the next 20 years. We have that, and that plan will still leave us short significantly on affordable housing. It's really important to understand what it is that our planning documents are, how they work, and make sure that when you're voting on it, you understand what it is. I think I'm at time.
And candidate, you have 30 seconds to say more.
Well, okay. Well, when I say the things that I've said, even though according to my opponent, she's saying that we will still have a problem, we may. But that being said, if we are doing it right, we will address that problem. So to me, that would be a huge accomplishment.
Thank you. And candidate Lelequist, would you like the question repeated?
Yeah, Melidwa, please.
Okay. The new comprehensive plan will look 20 years ahead. What's your vision for Bellingham in 2045? What will be our biggest win, our biggest challenge if we get it right?
Well, so this is a visioning question, so I'm going to assume that we're going to get it right. And when I look forward at the future, I'm thinking about a Bellingham that has more variety, more diversity, but also what I'm going to call proximity or closeness, that there's more things closer to each other in our neighborhoods, in our downtown, that there's more job opportunities, more housing opportunities, and more of those things are found within a five-minute walking circle or maybe a 15-minute bicycling circle. My vision is that there will be more of Bellingham here and more opportunities. Another part of my vision is something that I've already been working on. It's a more equitable city. In our parks plan or our transportation plan, we have elevated equity as a principle, which means that if there's an area that's been neglected and doesn't have parks, we put in parks. If there's an area that's been neglected and didn't have safe sidewalks, we put that in. So my vision is that there's no good part of town to live in, that every neighborhood is a good neighborhood to live in, and all the neighborhoods have all the public amenities and all the opportunities there. So my vision is that we get it right and we have more things here and they're closer to each other, and that provides everyone with the opportunities for creativity, for employment, for enjoyment, all close together to their home.
Thank you. Candidate Ready, your response?
Yes. My vision is one in which by that time, we will have, and hopefully earlier, we will have every resident housed, and we will do it with all the variety of housing that Holly Huffman has described earlier. And we have to have a means to get to that. So that's why I'm proposing a $100 million, it could be higher, it could be lower, and it could be a variety of different funds, but revolving funds for housing. I'm copying the Montgomery County, Maryland model in which there's a $100 million revolving fund that they use to build permanently affordable, publicly-owned housing, kind of the Vienna model on a starting scale. And so what happens there is that's financed not by taxes, but actually it's mixed-income housing, and it doesn't require federal funds, which we're not going to get, at least for the near future, and it frees you of all the strings that come with the federal funds. You can build that much cheaper. You can also build much nicer places. So what they do there, they build luxury, okay, units that they then rent 65% at full-market rate, and the profits from that, instead of going to investors, come back into financing the other 35% for low-income and workforce housing. And because it's a revolving fund, they can do that at scale, and you can have far more of that than has been happening with the federal state financing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to invite Ayla Banstra.
Hello. My name is Ayla Banstra and I'm a senior here at Bellingham High School. Civic involvement in my community is important to me because the decisions made by our government affect us all, and I want those decisions to reflect our needs. I hope that by being an active member of my community, I can help make change happen and inspire others to participate as well. My question for the candidates is, do you support changing the current minimum wage in Bellingham? Why or why not?
Apologies. I was still in awe of the high school civic engagement. Yes, I support increasing, we've just increased the minimum wage recently in Bellingham, and I support making sure that we get to a living wage for folks entry, whatever jobs pay minimum wage, I support expanding that, increasing that so that folks can afford to live in the city. Because right now, we don't have that affordability, we don't have that option. So someone who even makes $20 an hour, which is roughly around the minimum wage right now, still can't afford to pay rent, the average rent around here. So what we are paying people now, minimum wage, doesn't allow them to live any type of quality of life. And so making sure that we are helping people grow and develop in the city, we need to be able to support them, and definitely support increasing the minimum wage.
Thank you for the question. This is one I have a lot of firsthand experience with. So I've been a business owner for 15 years now. I own a small business downtown. I have about 20 employees. And so I've experienced minimum wage increases and what that looks like for a small business. So I have a little bit of a nuanced answer to this. I voted for the state-level minimum wage increases back 15 years ago or so, incremental increases that match CPI. And so, you know, if we have a high inflation one year, minimum wage goes up relative to that inflation, which I think we should have had that at a federal level a long time ago. I was supportive of that. I thought, you know, as a business owner, when people have more money in their pockets, they have more money to spend, all of this will even out. I, in general, think that that's how it worked out. I think that that was a great idea. But one thing about that minimum wage increase is it was very incremental and relatively small, jump from year to year. When you have jumps that are bigger, it puts more strain on a small business, and the smaller the business is and the more reliant it is on, if it's a business that's reliant on labor versus goods, so let's say service industry, food and beverage, that's a much bigger cost to absorb. And so it can be really difficult, the smaller the businesses, the more difficult it is to absorb it. So potentially is my answer.
First, I believe that our minimum wage is higher than the states, number one, and that was done by a vote of the people up here. Secondly, getting to a livable wage is going to be one of the biggest challenges that we have as a county. Our economy is mostly based on the service industry right now, and in order to attract industries and businesses that will employ people with a livable wage, that is a challenge that we're going to have to deal with, with our county partner and other municipalities to make sure that that develops in a way that provides the wages that people can work here and afford to live here. So.
That's correct. This year, minimum wage went up to $1,866 an hour, which means to income-qualify for a rental, that makes you eligible to rent something for $970 a month, which, if you're looking at the rental market, does not even come close to existing. So minimum wage is not enough to even rent a studio apartment that the average price is $1,350 a month. We need living wage jobs because as Holly has mentioned, as you weigh minimum wage, it does put strain on small businesses. They're the backbone of our economy, and we need them both supporting the people who have small businesses, but it also keeps more of the money in our economy, so it's really beneficial. We need living wage jobs, and as Skip was mentioning, as we have future planning, what I would suggest is we want to make sure that we have land use that includes both more housing but also the potential for industry, so that we can attract living wage jobs and be promoting career paths through apprenticeship programs, partnering with unions, and assist their efforts around transparency for wages and working conditions. I'm running out of time, but there's a lot of opportunities for us to improve and bring us closer to living wages. Thank you.
Yes. Thanks so much for that question because a couple of years ago, when I was chair of the Wacom Democrats, I tried to get our elected officials interested in adopting an increase in the minimum wage and did not get anywhere. And so Jace Cotton, who was vice chair at the time of the party, and I and others in an organization called Community First Wacom, which we created because of our frustrations with trying to get these things adopted by elected officials, nominally Democrats. We created that to go around the electeds, go directly to the voters. And so we did collect thousands of signatures for a $2 minimum wage increase. It went to the voters. And look, we have $1,866 in Bellingham and $1,666 outside. And I also insisted that we were not going to do like other cities have done, that have put that on there and have all kinds of carve-outs. I said, no, minimum wage has to be minimum wage. Carve-outs means it's not minimum wage. Sorry. I feel very strongly about that. I'm always concerned about, you know, helping the people at the bottom, but on the other hand, I also think we need to do something about our lack of support for business in Bellingham. We really need to be much more business-friendly so that we're growing. so that we're growing actual wages, actual jobs, so that we're not just dealing with symptoms here again.
Well, as has been pointed out, Washington State has one of the highest minimum wages in the nation and Bellingham has an even higher minimum wage. And so at this point, I'm not so sure the minimum wage is the problem. What we really want is better wages across the board. Our concern shouldn't be what the lowest of us earns, but what we all earn across the spectrum, economic opportunity. So in regard to the minimum wage in particular, an oddity of that initiative is that it couldn't actually apply to city employees. So it'd be really weird. The entire city outside of government gets an increase, but not inside the city. So I and other council members fought very hard to make sure that we voluntarily complied with the voter approved minimum wage. But again, I think the real issue is economic opportunity across the way. And so one of the things I did is I cooperated with other local officials and made sure that in over the last year, we had an industrial land availability study completed to identify exactly how much land we need for future job growth. When I say industrial, it's really industrial and commercial. So one of the things the city does is it plans for capacity for future housing. We have an equal mandate to plan for capacity for future job growth. And so my greatest interest as a city council official is to make sure that we can grow the entire economy so that there's economic opportunity for advanced manufacturing or professional or creative jobs, that we need good employment across the spectrum. And the minimum wage is only one tool and I think that tool has already been used.
So if there are people in the audience who have written a question on their card, please raise your hand so we can see and collect your question. This time, I'm going to start with Ward Six, with Michael, on the first question, the next question that we have, which is concerning water issues. Testing this summer identified elevated levels of forever chemicals in parts of Squalecum Creek. What new steps would you take to reduce stormwater runoff, contamination, and limit forever chemical exposure?
Yeah. So first about forever chemicals. The bad news is the source of that is in us and everything we do. There is no manufacturer or importer or source for PFAS. It is in our food, is it in our clothing, it is in our materials, it's going through our bloodstreams. And so it's everywhere. So the best thing to do with PFAS is to stop making the stuff. But even if you do that, because it's a forever chemical, it will be around for a very long time. So we're stuck dealing with the consequences. So the question had to do with stormwater. So the city of Bellingham does indeed have some of the strictest stormwater regulations in the country. In some ways, a little stricter than the national average. And part of that has to do with concern for Lake Watcom. The city of Bellingham has tightened up our stormwater rules and our requirements. We've also invested millions of dollars in stormwater infrastructure. My very first proposed legislation when I entered the city council was an increase in the water sitter charge and a devotion of at least half of that money to stormwater control. What we're doing with our money is we're preventing harmful development around the lake, but we weren't doing anything to actually undo the ongoing harm. And that's go to the question, stormwater control. So we now have, after successive engineering tries, we've actually invented here in Bellingham, a proprietary medium for filtering stormwater to remove pollutants. It's proprietary. We own it, but we make that publicly available. So we have been working on improved stormwater treatment for quite a while here in Bellingham. So it's not just PFAS, it's a variety of pollutants. So the solution is what the city has been doing is we have been, nope, working on stormwater control citywide.
Thanks. And candidate ready? Your response?
Yeah. A big part of that, too, is we have way too much pavement, way too many parking lots. We have to get rid of that pavement and so forth, which is what causes a lot of the stormwater problems. We've got to get rid of that for other reasons, too. Climate adaptation, getting rid of the heat island effect, not having such an emphasis on the automobile. So there's all of that. And then there's also, it's beyond PFAS. It's all plastics, if we're honest about it. And I don't even know why we're doing this fake plastic recycling now in Bellingham, because there is no such thing as plastic recycling. It's all a complete fiction that was invented by the companies and their agencies to make us believe that there is such a thing. Even with PET, the number one, number two, HDPE, those don't get recycled into more Coke bottles or into more milk jugs. They get recycled, they're not recycled, they're repurposed is the word. And it's only 5%. They're repurposed into, you know, like park benches and stuff. And that all flakes off as microplastics, harming the whole environment. There's nothing good about plastic, nothing, honestly. Yes, syringes maybe, things of that kind, a few very limited uses because we don't know what else to do in those cases. But overall, we really need to get rid of plastics altogether and stop the false pretense that we're recycling plastic.
Thank you. And Carrie, I mean, candidate Burnside.
Thank you. I'm the Silver Beach Neighborhood Association president and our drinking reservoir is in the Silver Beach neighborhood. The entire neighborhood makes up that. Ward Four also has Watcom Creek and some serious problems that are contributing to the PFAS. But in addition to PFAS, it's also pharmaceuticals, rodenticides, E. coli. Basin One has, one of the fun things I did this summer was tested for active E. coli samples and you'd be horrified how much is there. What can be done that isn't being done, Michael Lilquist is correct, that the city does have fantastic filtering system for the stormwater, but what wasn't shared is that only 90% of the storm drains in the Silver Beach neighborhood are plugged into that system. All the multifamily parcels in the Silver Beach neighborhood still filter, go unfiltered directly into our drinking reservoir. And then all of the houses along the shoreline are not mitigated either and go directly into our drinking water. So we've addressed 90% of it and that 10% is still not okay and having detrimental impact on our drinking water. So I worked really hard and lost this one. My council member voted against this, but it was to require that the storm drains are retrofitted, the unretrofitted ones.
Okay. From that point of view, we did, as a council, vote to tighten up the storm drainage issue from a point of view of, on a multifamily zoning, we downzoned those areas and we increased the requirement for if they expanded their impervious surfaces by, I believe it's 300 square feet, which is not very much. They have to put in the retrofitted storm drainage to protect the lake. Now, I serve on the Lake Watcom Policy Group. And every report that we get tells us that we are meeting all of our goals for the pollution, that in our basin one, that we are meeting those. And at the last meeting that we had, I specifically asked the person doing the analysis from Western Washington University, how does our lake stand up to other lakes that this person has done? And she gave us a very high rating. It's not perfect, but it is high.
Thank you. Time is up. And, yes, you're first.
Thank you. Thank you. So one of the downsides of being last is that you have to figure out what they haven't answered yet, that you had in your mind. So one of the great things about these questions so far is that you get to see that as a council member, we have to know a little bit about a lot of things. But we also have wonderful staff and as well as organizations that specialize in these sorts of things that help inform us. So we get to sit through a lot of science, actually, particularly when it comes to water quality. And so we have people on staff that are amazing about making sure that we as a city are not only meeting expectations, but exceeding them, using new technologies, like Councilmember Lilquist was talking about, which we can be really proud of. You know, when it comes to stormwater in particular, I think there are two areas that I think we need to pay a little bit more attention to. And I don't know what the answers are, but I bet our very smart staff and/or other communities have figured this out. One, when you think about stormwater, we have to realize that all of the storm drains downtown go right into the bay. So anything that's going down the drains in our stormwater are going into the bay, things like cigarette butts, speaking of plastic. So making sure that we are sweeping consistently, making sure that the public is aware of that. The other thing that we need more public awareness around is dog poop. Fecal bacteria is a big pollutant and one that we can do better on.
Can you give me the question one more time?
Yes.
All right.
Testing this summer identified elevated levels of forever chemicals in parts of Squalecum Creek. What new steps would you take to reduce stormwater runoff, contamination, and limit forever chemicals?
And so I appreciate the question. And in my professional experience and what I think contributes to health, a huge part of that is your environment, your environment around you. So in public health, we've been looking at PFAS over the past couple of years and looking at figuring out how do we measure it and how do we be responsive to it because there are health impacts. It's in our body right now, all the time, and it's all around us. And so how do we be responsive to that? I think one thing that we can do in taking in something that I spoke to earlier is the systems level, understanding that our systems in our society and also in our environment are not isolated to one thing or another, and that we need to be working in coordination with the county and with the other counties around us because our water doesn't stay within the city boundaries. It moves around and it doesn't respect that. And so we really need to look at expanding our Board of Health to include the city and small cities and subject matter experts, because that's where environmental policy takes place at the county level, at the Board of Health. And we should be at the table because we are stewards to the water, but also our tribes, looking at our tribes as being a part of that Board of Health as well. And so anything that we do with our water, we should look towards our tribal partners and our community for their guidance and consultation. I also would say that I agree with everyone, but I would just say that instead of requiring folks, requiring behavior change and creating regulation around that, I would really look at education and incentivizing folks to have behavior change that's responsive to the things that go down our drains.
Thank you. Noah Baker?
Hello, everyone. My name is Noah Baker and I'm a senior here at Bellingham High School. I believe that civic engagement and involvement are both important parts of what make up a well-educated community. In the Bellingham area, we pride ourselves with being progressive, open to new ideas and policies and new perspectives that make up how we see the world around us. And the best way to stay educated on these topics is to engage in the civics in our community. Going to public forums, volunteering, participating in community gatherings, or heck, even voting, are always that you, the people, can contribute and progress your learning and engage in the civic community around us. My question for the candidates is what policies might you support to incentivize landlords to offer affordable housing?
I'm sorry. I wanted to go to Ward Four. I want to contribute a point.
Oh. Yeah, yeah.
So they can't hear you in the audience. And so what she's saying is she's going to start with Ward Four. Would you like to start with myself or Williams?
Candidate Williams.
Could you repeat your question again?
Yes, of course. What policies might you support to incentivize landlords to offer affordable housing?
Well, one option, which we don't have right now, is to subsidize the development of affordable housing with some sort of funding mechanism, meaning this. There's an issue called, well, anyway, if we're going to require developers and folks to do that, then we have to perhaps foot some of the bill because what'll happen, or what has happened in general, is that if the development project doesn't pencil out for them in terms of their economic needs, and there are a number of things that challenge that, then they won't build. They'll go build somewhere else where they can get that kind of support as minuscule as it may be. So I believe that we have to find some ways within our economic means to subsidize some of those requirements. But that being said, how much time? Oh, okay, I'm done. Okay. Thank you. But it also has to be within the means that we have, the financial means that we have. So that's my feeling about that issue.
And the question was actually not about development, but about incentivizing affordable rent. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, yep, to answer the question, I run the Bellingham Tenants Union. And this is what I do every day. I advocate both here at Bellingham, trying to get policies that other cities are doing, that we can implement also. And then I also lobby down in Olympia, getting these changes implemented. I was part of the team that helped get rent stabilization passed. My work has got me an invitation to Governor Inslee's Housing Roundtable and then also to the bill signing this year with Governor Newsom. Wow, that's a wishful one. I'm going to run out of time. Someone skip to it. First thing that we can do to incentivize landlords to offer affordable housing is outlaw the use of AI algorithms that artificially inflate rent. Seattle's already done that and King County has done that. We can do that, too. Bellingham is the most expensive for rent for cities our size, and it's for a reason. It's artificially inflated. So I have many other policies that will help incentivize affordable rents for our renters.
Yeah. This goes back to our housing shortage because of our zoning. We have to allow, we have to vastly expand the supply of housing. What empowers landlords is the shortage. That gives them an enormous amount of power. And the only way you get rid of that is getting to the point where like in, say, Austin, Texas, you have more supplied than demand and then all of a sudden it flips that so that it's the renters that have the power. So that's one big part of it. And another way that you get there was from what I've been proposing earlier, through using that Montgomery County, Maryland model with revolving funds, where you're building vast amounts of social housing that is mixed income and that is expanding that 35%, right, of it that I've been talking about. That will be competing with the private rental market and helping bring down prices. So all of this is about supply. And we can vastly expand the supply by having this kind of social housing. It's been done elsewhere. It's being copied now in five states. It's time we bring it here.
Sure. So, I mean, I've advocated in Olympia last term for rent stabilization. So that's one of the things that I fought for and we were half successful. We do have rent stabilization, but I think imperfectly done. The algorithmic price setting or price fixing that Ms. Burnside was talking about, I've already spoken with our city council members, we're already having a policy analyst work on it. I'm already actively advocating the city of Bellingham take step to outlaw price fixing. It's basically a way that rent prices are artificially escalated by colluding among landlords. So that's one thing we can do to prevent price increases. So that's one thing we can do to prevent price increases. We do need more opportunities for housing. But again, as I said at the beginning of this, it's a matter of emphasis. Mr. Redding just said that the only way we can deal with it is with more supply, but I think that's not necessarily true because the market doesn't necessarily offer housing below market rate. But we do need to create more housing. One way we can do that is that we've already created more opportunities for housing and we're reforming our housing zoning codes. Mr. Redding referred to the hundreds of zoning codes. Well, that will soon be for residential areas reduced to three, a low, medium, and a high intensity of development, to make housing and apartment buildings easier to build. In addition to that, we recently passed in some areas, I think in all of our residential areas now, in the multifamily areas, a minimum density. What we're seeing in some cases is that people were underbuilding housing, so we do need more housing supply, and I've helped to support that already.
Question one more time.
Yeah. What policies might you support to incentivize landlords to offer affordable housing?
Okay. I think that there's a lot we can do. Banning the AI that creates the price points is one very important tool. I think one thing that we can do and some of the ordinance that we've passed this past year is distinguish between landlords who are smaller and local and landlords who are corporations from out of the state or out of the county, who are looking at housing as investments instead of homes. One thing that I think is lacking is a resource center, a place for both renters and landlords to go. We also have a small fledgling program within our mediation center as well that allows landlords and tenants to come together and have conversations, real mediated conversations about disputes that they're having. I think we need to expand that because when we have more understanding of each other's situation, we're more likely to come to a resolution of whatever conflict exists, and generally it's over the price points of things. I also want to talk about opportunities for enabling folks to parcel out their own land. The city council really is in charge of regulation and zoning, as we said before, and creating policies around that. And I really like the idea of allowing us to partner directly with single-family homeowners so that they can part and create subsidized homes on their land that they can run out at affordable rates.
Okay, thanks for the question. And I think ultimately what we're getting at here is how do we get some lower rents? And I think that there have been so many great points that were going through my mind. Number one, what's going to get a landlord to give a lower rent when there's more competition? When they want to attract that great tenant? But that tenant has a lot of options. And so when a tenant has a lot of options, that landlord has to do a little bit more to compete. And so we need to really boost our supply, as has been seen in many other cities across the country, that when you boost the supply of housing, the rents stabilize or they start to drop. So we need to get our vacancy rates up to a healthy range of about 5% to 7%. It's much lower than that right now. It's lived at about 2% for quite some time. So that's one thing. The other thing that I think is an incentive for landlords to provide lower rents is if they have great tenants. Those are the stories that I hear about. That was me as a tenant. I had a landlord, several landlords that would provide lower rents, didn't want to raise the rent because they didn't want me to leave. I was a great tenant. I paid on time. And so I think that communication between landlords and tenants is very important if there are disputes. I think that we as a city can help to provide some of that understanding and collaboration and cooperation. And I know that we have organizations in our city that do that work as well, but making sure that that's accessible and it is funded so that it can continue. Those are two ways I think we can lower rents.
We had a number of very good questions from the audience. We had a number of very good questions from the audience. Unfortunately, due to our time, this is going to be our last question. What would you do, and you will be the first one on this, I'm sorry I didn't give you forewarning last time. What would you do to protect the immigrants and immigrant families in Bellingham, especially considering the current politics of our country?
Absolutely. This is clearly a question that is weighing on everybody's mind right now, understandably. We in Washington State have the Keep Washington Working Act, and that act states that our local law enforcement cannot cooperate with immigration enforcement. That is something that we take very seriously in the city. That is something that our law enforcement and our law enforcement leadership takes very seriously. One of the things that we're seeing right now is that because people are not trusting, they won't report crimes. And that is a big concern of our police department right now. They themselves are doing some outreach and doing some work to try to figure out how to get that trust back. One of the ways is just spreading the word and saying, "We do not cooperate with immigration enforcement." I think that's a really important message that needs to spread, be spread far and wide. So there is work within the city that's being done to try to make sure to facilitate those conversations and that outreach. And that's the kind of outreach where we need to be figuring out the ways to go to the people that need to hear it. We can't just put that in a press release or on social media. And so that's one aspect of working to ensure that people feel safe in our community. And I'm going to go ahead and stop there, because I'm just about out of time.
Don't drop the mic. Can you hear me? Barely? Yes? Okay. I am sorry, the question again.
What would you do to protect immigrants and immigrant families in Bellingham, especially considering the current politics of our country?
What would I do? It's what am I doing right now to protect immigrant families? It's a great timely question and another one that's near and dear to my heart. I grew up in an immigrant household myself. My neighbors are immigrants. Both my family and my neighbors own small businesses, and so I think there's a lot that we can do to protect both not only our immigrant communities who are members of our community, but our immigrant communities who are business owners as well. I am doing that currently in my professional role as an epidemiologist. I work with data, and so I'm going to be a part of, last month, the governor released an executive order to create a subcommittee working on immigrant and refugees to protect them across the state. And so I'll be participating in my professional capacity on that subcommittee to figure out how do we create laws or how do we protect the data of our immigrant communities from the federal administration. I think that there's so much to be said about speaking someone's language, about being out in the community. Those are things that I do myself, that I speak another language. I grew up speaking Spanish in my household. I live in an immigrant community. My neighbors are immigrants. And so being out and about and creating community and saying that, yes, we are a part of government, but we are also, we see you and we are a part of your community, is so important. There's so much value in just being that individual who is straddling both worlds, both the governmental world, but a member of the community. There's so much to be said for that.
Thank you. Candidate Burnside.
This is a really important topic. And since we did talk about the comp plan earlier, one of the things that come up every year in the comp plan is how we don't do a good job going out and getting input from our immigrant communities when we are doing city planning. So that's one of the things where we can help, is do a better job going out to those communities and finding ways to connect with them instead of expecting them to come to us. Additionally, we no longer have the Immigration Advisory Board, so it's doubly important that we partner with the organizations that do work directly and have more direct connection and support for our community members, things like community to community. There's a variety of organizations that we could also use their guidance. It's important to, instead of assume what is the best for other people, is find out directly from them what support they need and then find ways to offer that support. I know that volunteers at the food bank have shared that they're seeing fewer people going there. So one of the things that we could do to help them is where they're fearful of the government find a way to get that service to them. So with the food bank, it's getting food to people that are not getting a service that they used to be able to, and I'm out of time.
Well, you've heard a lot of good ideas about how to do this. We do have a committee called the Keep Washington Working Act. Well, actually, it's a task force to examine what is actually going on with us and if there are improvements that need to be made in our practice with all of this, with our law enforcement department that is already in place, that more or less replaced the Immigration Advisory Board that we had before. That is also a topic that is coming up from not just Bellingham's point of view, but with the Racial Equity Commission, which is a county-wide commission set up as a result of the George Floyd incident and so forth. And that is a topic that is coming up with that group as well, not only for Bellingham, but for the whole county, so that we can cooperate and work together to protect our immigrant population.
Thank you. Candidate Lillicle.
Well, first of all, I think we just need to realize that the attack on immigrants is cruel and racist and lawless. Lawless in the particulars and lawless more generally. There are completely valid green card holding or permanent residents or citizens who are being swept up in this. This is not actually aimed at problematic immigrants. We have to realize the motives behind this are themselves suspect. And so one of the things we can do as individuals and as a public official is speak out. So for example, at the last No Kings Rally, I was one of the featured speakers, and I spoke out against the abuse and the demonization of our immigrant community. And by the way, there's another No Kings Rally coming up. The city did have an immigrant advisory board. I support its creation, and I did not support its getting rid of the immigrant advisory board. It had some troubles, but I think we should have worked harder on keeping those immigrant voices closer to us. As Skip has mentioned, we do have a Keep Washington Working Task Force that's taken over some of that work, but I think something is lost. What more can we do? Well, cities are small, but the federal court system is powerful. And to date, the most effective check on the abuses of power by this administration against immigrants and others has been in the Court of Law. The City of Bellingham is actively involved in a lawsuit right now. We have already secured a preliminary injunction against the Trump administration for accusing us of, for example, being a sanctuary jurisdiction, and we've also joined other lawsuits as an amicus brief.
Thank you. Candidate Redding.
Yeah, for me, this is somewhat personal because I was born abroad. I grew up abroad, speaking a different language than I now speak. I spoke French at that point. I'm a citizen of Belgium, and, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that Belgium, unlike us, has a law that says that after five years, anybody who's undocumented can apply for, you know, with the municipality to be able to vote in local elections. And I can tell you, that has a big impact on politics when they get the vote. I think that, you know, immigrant rights are human rights, right? I mean, human beings have rights regardless of documentation or non-documentation, and I find it very offensive, frankly, this whole documented thing or the term illegal alien. What are they? From some other planet or something? And even they were. Why would we be treating them that way? I just don't, I just find this all very offensive. I've spent my entire life professionally working in the domain of human rights and democracy. Specifically, I worked in the Department of Justice for, on, you know, matters of asylum and refugees. And so this is something I take very much to heart.
Thank you. And it is time for your closing statements. I'm going to have you go this direction, starting with you, candidate Redding. You'll have one minute for your closing statement.
Yeah, so as I've been saying, my central issue is housing because all the other ones are connected to that, whether it's climate adaptation, whether it's reducing emissions, whether it's reducing homelessness, whether it's making transit viable. All of these things depend on changing our housing policy away from what we're doing now, which is basically sprawling and then asking for annexations towards making our building dense neighborhoods that are leafy, walkable, bikeable, that reduce emissions and are responsible to where we need to be moving that way, and centered on the core principle that everybody, every human being has a right, not only to shelter, but to a really decent and dignified home.
Thank you. Candidate Lillicle.
I agree with what he said in his vision. That's kind of what I was saying at the beginning, we're not that far apart. But what does set me apart is that I have earned a reputation of hard work, of digging in, doing my homework, listening, collaborating, and delivering results year after year, moving this city forward on housing, on climate change, on criminal justice reform, on a variety of issues. And I'm not done yet. No one in this position should be sitting still. You know, we have new challenges that come up, and we have perennial challenges that we need to face. I'm the only candidate in our race who's endorsed by the Democratic Party. I'm the only candidate in the races endorsed by the Lummi Nation from a recognition of the respect for tribal rights. I'm the only candidate supported by the Washington Housing Alliance Action Fund for my work on climate justice. I'm the only candidate supported by the Sierra Club for my longstanding work as a champion for the environment and for climate action. I would appreciate your support as well.
Candidate Williams.
Thank you. I've lived here in this city for over 30 years. And where I came from, I was raised by a village that said, "Your mission in life is going to be to use your skills and your talents to improve the lives of others." That's the way I've lived my life. That's why I became a public school teacher, a union rep for my profession, and that's why I've served my communities in any way that I can, from Tacoma to Bellingham. Now, that being said, one of, none of us are experts on any of these topics, but for me, when people asked me to do this four years ago, I said, "I don't have the answers, but I have the way to get the answers." So hopefully you will support me and give me another four years.
Thank you.
Thank you again. I'm Carrie Burnside, and I grew up here. I'm a lifelong resident. And unfortunately, I still see today some of the same problems that existed over 40 years ago. And I really just pushed and driven to run because of the lack of response from my council member, from lack of action from the city to address serious issues that residents face on a daily basis. I'm a former lieutenant with Waukesha County Fire District 8 that really instilled in me to run towards a problem instead of away from it. I'm an organizer with the Bellingham Tenants Union. I'm the Silver Beach Neighborhood Association President, which was dormant until I revitalized it. But I am also really dedicated, looking forward to bringing the skills that I have to help bring some resolution to problems that people are facing on a daily basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Wayneman, your closing.
Hello. I'm Leah Wayneman, and I'm running for the Bellingham City Council Ward 2 position. My husband and I, we are raising our two little girls in Bellingham, which is the same town where their great-grandparents grew up, met, and fell in love. And they also were immigrants to Bellingham. So for 17 years, I've worked in public service. So I'm a first-time candidate, but I'm not new to public service, and I am running so that we can bring the public back to the public service position. And I am running so that we can bring the public back to the public service position. And right now in Bellingham, I see that my friends, my colleagues, working families in general, are being crushed by the rising costs. Someone spoke earlier about the affordability here and stagnant wages, which we've spoken to, which is why I support increasing the minimum wage. The election cycle is not just about how we build more housing to increase supply. It is much deeper than that. Our housing crisis is a symptom of our failed systems across the board in this city. And the causes and impacts we see in the news every day, childhood instability because families have to move over and over again to find affordability, increased climate impacts because we don't have workforce housing and people have to move further and further out. I would love to speak more to you and talk to you more about this later on. Thank you for your support.
So I am running for reelection because I feel like we are on the precipice of some really exciting change. We've got a lot of momentum on the city council with the mayor. We're working well together. I think this next year, we're, we're going to really see some things start to happen that make a difference, and I want to be a part of helping to make that happen. And as the last speaker of the night for the last official forum that we have, for all of us who've been doing this for six months, I want to take a minute just to say thank all of you for getting involved in this. It's not easy, folks. It's a slog. We're counting down the days until you have to turn in your ballots. And we're all, we're all doing this because we're passionate about it. We're passionate about our city. We're passionate about community. It's clear. We have, we have differences, but they're not huge differences. And so thanks, thanks to all of you for doing this. And thanks to all of you for being engaged and coming up with great answers and listening to us. Pontificate up here.
Sorry, the time is up. I just want to say, we are so lucky to have all of you here tonight and all of you interested in making Bellingham a better place. And now we have some closing words from Lucas Goodwin.
My name is Lucas Goodwin. I'm a senior here at Bellingham High School. Civic engagement is important to me because I think everyone has the chance to change how things are run by being informed, informed of what is happening. I think civic engagement allows everyone to have a voice and not just the loudest or most powerful voices. It doesn't matter if you're 20 or 80, you still have the power to use your voice and the ability to engage. Thank you so much for coming to the Bellingham City Council Candidate Forum. We appreciate our school for being able to host this event, along with the League of Women Voters of Bellingham slash Wacom County. We'd also like to recognize the financial support of the Bellingham Public Schools Foundation for paying our student tech crew for their work tonight. The League of Women Voters would like me to remind you guys that ballots have been mailed out as of today. Drop boxes are ready to, are ready to receive ballots. Ballots must be postmarked or put in a ballot box. We hope that hearing the candidates' views on these issues discussed tonight, whoa, wait, discussed tonight, you feel better, better informed to vote and engage in our community. Thank you again for joining us tonight.